Rachel Schlesky is here, Kate Caneta is not here. Gladys Cooper, Richard DiNelli, absent. Patrick Donston.
Here.
Frederick Ara.
Here.
Dave Matrana.
Here.
Manuel Ramirez is not here. Rafael Pedraza.
Present.
And Skolina.
Here.
And we have recognitions for the Cabe Student Leadership Awards. The Cabe Student Leadership Awards Program has been expanded to include 7th and 8th grade students along with high school students who exhibit exemplary leadership skills. Two students from each school and Cabe member district are eligible to receive the Cabe Student Leadership Award. School principals are requested to ask their staff for names of students who exhibit leadership skills based upon criteria, under encourage them. The principals should then complete the attached application, include the names, re-biography of students who are being nominated to receive the Cabe Student Leadership Award. We have Cabe Student Leadership Awards. To Sahil Patel. If you want to stand. (Applause). The principal would be sure to let us know something.
Yeah.
Here you go. And if you wanted to stay over there, congratulations, we'll come over and you guys will probably take a picture afterwards. If you want to go stand right next to the principal.
(Laughter). Pretty thing, everybody. This right here is Sahil Patel. I tell you, he is a leader. And one thing I like about him, he's not afraid to speak up to what he believes. And we just kind of listen to him because what he says, he's doing right. He takes pride in helping others. He is so involved in everything at the school. Okay? That's right. Right nicely.
You just have a few spares.
I interrupted my flow now.
Start off, start off.
Okay, good.
Do you mind if I start again?
Okay. I'll read it and make it even better. Sahil Patel is a leader who's not afraid to speak up for what he believes. He takes pride in helping others and just working for others to achieve their potential. While at Broadview, he has been on the High Honors and honored every trimester since 6th grade.
Wow.
He is recognized as the Student of the Month. He is clustered almost every year. Also, he has strong academic achievements. He has, I mean, he's involved in everything. He is in the National Junior Honor Society. He's on our wonderful math team. He's in our CPET program. He's in the orchestra. He's on the STEM Scouts and he runs our Leader Council. So, we're really proud of him. He's done some crazy, incredible things. One thing we like about him, he is very humble. You would not know that this kid possessed a lot of greatness because he's so humble. And those are the kids that we're going to be hearing about in the future. So, I'd like to present to you Mrs. Maria. Do you do Maria too?
Yes, and also from Broadview.
Yeah, stay standing.
Maria Strachner.
And we get to hear from grab about you too. When you have to ask for a kid who is an exemplary leader, it's Maria. She's amazing. I remember you when we met at 6th grade for orientation and you came to the school for the first time with your mom. And I'll never forget looking and saying, "Oh, this girl is going to give us a ride for her life." And she is. She is so diligent. She's hardworking. Nothing stands in her way. She's just an achiever. She's involved in tremendous activities in our school. She's also part of the National Junior Honor Society. She volunteers for the theater program. She was Rafiki this year.
Yep.
Oh, yes. And also, she is working with her local church where she works in, at an animal shelter. So, we're really proud of her a lot about that. She's really a, I call her a servant leader, which means that she doesn't mind getting dirty as well as she needs to be well. It's amazing. And I just am so proud to have her. I hate to lose these two kids. And so, if we can just give her a round of applause, she's amazing. (Applause). Real quick, we have their parents with them tonight. And you know what? We do a hard job here, but I'm telling you, if we didn't have amazing parents like this, we wouldn't have this. So, if we could have Ms. Patel stand up and Ms. Strachner and Mr. Strachner, if you could stand up. And so, I'd like to take all the credit for Maria's development. She has her 4th grade teacher here from Statz, Adelaide. And this is Statz. Why don't you stand up as well?
Very nice. Thank you so much. We'll do photos at the end when everybody, all of you together. And so, now from Rogers Park, Ms. Caitlin Lee.
This is Caitlin Lee. She's one of our greatest and most outgoing students. She's very conscientious and she takes pride in her schoolwork, grades, and education. She's always doing her best. She loves her family very much and she knows that she can count on him. So, Dr. Thomas said, "It really takes the parents that are really supporting him." So, kudos for parents for a 13-year-old to shout them out and how much they know that you care. She loves to write the plenton. Am I saying that right? So, she's very active. I don't, obviously. She's very active also. She's in dance classes, she's in soccer, gymnastics, and swimming. She's currently taking up tap, jazz, and hip-hop in addition to playing the flute. So, she's an all-around kind of Renaissance gal. She's a stage manager for the Living Stations of the Cross at her church. She was involved in our musical theater program at Rogers Park and was the lead role in this year's Mary Poppins. She additionally is on the National Junior Honor Society and she's on our SAVE Club, which is Students Against Violence Everywhere. This summer, she's planning on being a counselor and training at the Boys and Girls Club of Richmond. So, we're really proud of her and want to present Caitlin Lee.
And Mr. Ishant Patel.
I'd like to present to you Ishant Patel. He is another diligent and hard-working student. He's currently serving as a sergeant for the Civil Air Patrol and he trains new cadets in the field of emergency services. He was our Student of the Month in May and he has volunteered to support the Rogers Park community such as participating in our most recent Paint the Park project and providing child care to families who attend our evening events. So, he's a very responsible young man. Additionally, he is a member of the RPMS Math Club. We're really bringing it home this year. We're getting more points every time. We're kind of a new fledgling club that we're really proud of the kids for trying hard to stick into it. He was a core value captain to lead and help guide his FTC program, which is a program where students build and program robots. And his team was our Connecticut State Champion. And they went on to win 3rd place in the World Champions and they were finalists in the Collins Aerospace and they were undefeated until, Collins Aerospace Innovation Award and they were undefeated until the finals. So, I present to you Ishant, one of our other. And I'd like to also have the parents of both the students stand up to get a round of applause.
Hey, from Westside Middle School, this is Chloe Gutman.
Thank you for, thanks to the board for recognizing our students this evening. It's a great honor for them and we love being able to showcase our wonderful students. Like all the other students, Chloe is a wonderful student, very hardworking. She's in our Global Studies Academy, did amazing projects over the years. She's actively involved in lots of activities. She competitively dances. She had one of the primary roles in our school musical, "The Go On The Roof." So, we're proud of her for that work as well. We'd like, congratulate you.
And Mr. Jeffney Peterson.
And also, we have to mention Chloe's a member of the National Junior Honor Society. Jeffney is a student in Artisan Academy. Again, wonderful project, excellent work throughout all his years at Westside, a great team player, a leader within and among his peers. Jeffney plays hockey, will play hockey next year. He's an active member of the National Junior Honor Society and he's an altar server at his church. So, congratulations to Jeffney. And all the rest of the parents, I'll depict their applause.
From Danbury High School, Ms. Alicia Maragansen.
I'm lucky enough this year, and this is what they look like four years from now. This is what they turned into, exactly the same thing. I'm lucky enough to bring you two rock stars this year. So, I'm going to start with Ms. Alicia Nagrasap. She may be, seem familiar to you because she is actually one of our BOG people that comes, students that come here and speak every once a month to you, even though she's been slacking just a slight with that. Yep, yep. She is ambitious and conscientious student finishing up her senior year at Danbury High School. Not one to shy away from taking responsibility and leadership positions. She is extremely engaged in her community, her school, and is in a perpetual state of involvement. In school, she is president of the Board of Governors, a member of the National Honor Society, Leo Club, and takes part in peer leadership programs. Outside of school, she is a competitive dancer, just mentioned before, like everybody else. Dance schools and performing arts where she has earned numerous titles and special awards for her performances. She is also highly engaged in the board community from working on local campaigns, donating times to nonprofit organizations, and raising awareness for women's cancer. In her free time, she teaches dance and works at Rogers, Richter Park Golf Course, all this while maintaining over a 4.0 GPA. While free time is not often found, but when it is, it is typically in the pursuit of new adventure, including small acting and modeling roles in various projects. She is eager to continue her educational aspirations and community involvement at UCOM next fall. Family, stand up. Lucas is a scholar athlete who believes in making a difference. He is an all FC Athletic Bowl player and has a 3.93 GPA. Currently, he is president of the National Art Honor Society and received a perfect score on his AP Student Portfolio. The National Honor Society, that, they could. Did you ask him to do one painting for the entire school only takes a year, correct? How many times did you erase that? How many times did you erase that canvas?
A couple times.
A couple times, right? The National Honor Society, the National English Honor Society, and the Senior Problem Committee are a few extracurricular commitments. He conducts himself in a confident and respectful manner and is passionate about Danbury. If he sees a situation where he can help, he steps in and facilitates change. To expand, to expand on this, this year's Danbury International Night, he agreed to co-host and secured the participation of seven new groups, which is a huge organ thing we have in the gyms, Danbury High School, for all of our different clubs. Culture, sorry. Lucas organized this year's Unified Prom all by himself. And when I mean all by himself, let me explain. So, Lucas comes to me and says, "Mr. Dom, and I'll take it on to you to fight prom this year." I say, "All right, me and you, let's do it." You know, most of the time it's a peer leadership project, but you wanted to do it all by himself this year. So, I said, "All right, let's do it." He goes out, he goes to all the local establishments, gets the menus, the prices, sits down with me. I say, "All right, which one?" We talk about what we want to eat, where we're going to go, what's going to happen. Two weeks later, comes back with a contract. I see it. I don't see him till four months later. It's a week before the event, I actually hunt him down and go, "What's going on?" And his simple words to me is, "I got this." So, okay, man. So, that tells you the leadership and time that he put into this problem. And it's, it's an incredible event. I mean, I'm not kidding, I said that already. Okay, hold on. We're all scripted here. Sorry. Okay. The best thing that I got out of that whole thing was his reason for doing it. It wasn't a project or an assignment or anything like that. It was just to ensure that our special education students had a fun night out. That's it. He wanted to make sure that those students had an opportunity and that's what he should really commend him for. His altruistic views of just how he goes out and does this without looking for anything in return is exactly what Lucas Emmeral's all about. Round of applause, please. At the end of the day, what matters most to him is knowing he's making a positive impact on helping others. Lucas will continue his academic and athletic career kicking at Hobart College next fall.
Okay, and from the A-School, Mr. Justin Escobedo.
Good evening, board, and welcome guests. I present to you Justin Escobedo. Justin is a senior at the Alternative Central Excellence and he has grown over the past few years to become a student who truly exemplifies excellence. Justin started at A's as a boy known for his love of skating and has evolved into a young man who's recognized for his work ethic, his moral character, and his hard work. He has earned excellent grades and maintained excellent attendance. Justin is an active member of the school community and has volunteered at every school community service event that has taken place since he started at the school. He is truly a young gentleman who goes out of his way to help other students, his teachers, and other staff on a daily basis. Justin's commitment to excellence in every aspect of his life has resulted in the attainment of many awards. And including to, in addition to this award, excuse me, it's been a long day. He also won the Western Connecticut Superintendent Association's Award. He has won the Student of the Month Award, the Attendance Awards, and the A's of Hearts for Care. In addition to that, he holds an after-school job working with the senior community. So, congratulations, Justin. Would you like him to present to us as well?
Yep, Ms. Isabella, now.
So, Bella is a student at A's that I wasn't prepared to speak about tonight, but I'm very honored in doing so. When I think about Bella, I think of three main aspects to her character. One is her academic strength. She is very intelligent and hardworking and does everything she can to succeed. In addition, she's a very good friend and always has an ear open to listen and help anyone she can. Lastly, the thing I associate most with Bella is her creativity and her honesty in her work. So, congratulations, Bella, to that. There's a shout-out to the parents who attended every parent's night as well.
All the students want to come over and get their photo taken and, from a full month ago, the parents.
How about you two going to go, congratulations?
This is just like from my show.
Look, I can't, I can't take all the credit, you know? I wish we could. Thank you very much.
Thank you for inviting and I'm so happy to be here. I don't know if you know yet, but I was like.
Great job. Before everybody leaves, we wanted to mention to everyone Teacher Appreciation Week. Thank you, this week. National School of York Day, I'm paying, our teachers who come down here so much. Thank you so much. Okay, we have public participation. Christy Zalida.
Talking about Paint the Park?
Yes, Paint the Park.
Nice. You're welcome to sit too.
And a painter.
So, I just want to speak for, about the Paint the Park. So, I want to say thank you to board members. Rachel was there, she gets the word with the dollars. She comes into the end, she's like, "Do you think that you just have one more thing? One big baker?" She was the truth, she was there first and she saved. Paint was awesome, she was there. She had another committee, so I appreciate the legal. And also, we give a shout-out to any, well, no one's not here, but she did show up. So, I thank you all for your participation. And the rest of you with Eric Spears. We have 175 volunteers that included teachers, former Rogers Park teachers, administrators, parents, students, DGS students, upper bound students, Civil Air Patrol people, and board members. And thirty, a third of our staff came out to help Paint the Park. So, we were super excited. Wanted to thank publicly, the Press Air, who was personally, who was the company subsidiary that gave us the initial monetary donation, $5,000, versus all this stuff that goes with painting, which is a lot. And then Sherwin-Williams partnered up and provided all the paint, like their top-notch paintings with the painting. $60 can paint, beautiful things, and we used over $120. We had, I think the last town in Texas total was $100 on walls, $20 on a trim, and I think it was five or six of each, even rain, which is pop and walk in, we all come see it and we can't see. So, we, we had a lot extra. We're not completely done yet, but we also, oh, it was 700 working hours. They said man-hours, but I found this like this. But it was 700 hours of work, actually. We did it in six hours, which is amazing. We were there, people came in registered between 7:00 and 7:30, we did a kickoff about 7:35. And at 7:45, everybody was going to their floors and getting their direction from the Press Air and Sherwin-Williams people. And by 10 o'clock, we had a coat of paint on every wall in Rogers Park, all the halls. By 12, people were kind of petering out and our, I think what was really touching to us is not only the number of parents that came out, our parents worked many jobs and they have a lot of responsibilities outside of not always able to come to our evening events, but they came out in full force. And it was so wonderful to see so many parents come out and give, a lot of them are very skilled, I think, a lot more skilled than I am. And they just did such a beautiful job. It was nice. And speaking with them, they, they were thanking me and my, and the team for letting them come in and like be a part of something. That really, that's what community building is about, that's what we're about this year and moving forward. So, that was really touching. But the generosity of businesses in town, I just have to give a shout-out. Friday night, we had about 25 staff members, a couple of parents, students prepping the park, the pizza party. Lindsos, Nikos, and Soko donated pizza for us to have. So, that we, we were sustained as we were putting down that paper and taping the last bit of tape. Our students, I have to give a shout-out to them for taping. We used our team enrichment time, we handed out blue tape and directions with pictures and arrows, like, "Tape here." They did a great job. So, with the visuals sometimes, but they taped everything, it was awesome. We got some fixed up, but they just took such pride, which was what really was, it was about for us. They took pride in being a part of it, even if they weren't there when I said it. Bagel Man, Texas Roadhouse, they, we had bagels and delicious rolls and that delicious, that, the butteries, it was awesome. For breakfast, Shop Right and Price Right were so amazing with donations of gift cards that we got snacks and 1,000 water bottles. In addition, we had some of our custodian, Wayne donated 10 cases of water. Our cafeteria lady donated a couple cases. Like people are just so giving. Mothership Bakery, they're delicious, they're chocolate cookies, they're like heaven. 100 of them they gave to us. It was amazing. J. Casey ate a sandwiches. Chick-fil-A came with 200 sandwiches. It was amazing. We had a generous parent, Mrs. Donick, she donated two giant three-foot subs. So, people are just ready to just pour out donations. Even teachers are like, "I can't make it, but here's somebody to get, to get some stuff." So, I just wanted to kind of just throw it out there. The Paint the Park was a, I can't think of a P word, it's like successful. But it was really awesome. I hope that you all be able to stop by and see how amazing it looks. We really have a bunch of pop colors, we walk in and it just, it takes on a whole new, for some of the school, so. I'm trying to get Press Air to paint the outside now.
I want to speak about lots of stuff. Lynn Scott?
All right, I've been having a little bit of this memory. I don't, you know, I don't, you're only writing things down, but I have to keep myself focused tonight, otherwise I'd be here for a while, so.
Okay, time's up.
I know, seriously. And it makes me so sad after such a positive evening to come up here and say about the things I'm going to say. But these are the things that keep me awake at night, so if I talk about them, they'll stop keeping me awake, which I really find not to cry to, which I don't know that's a problem with mine too. So, I've had a lot of really proud teacher moments at the last several board event meetings. So, seeing Maria and Chloe, both former students, honored tonight, that was awesome. I came from Maria. Mrs. Strachner is still very involved at Staley Road School. They're a fantastic family, so that was super exciting. Aheel last week, I've been glad for the last meeting, that was amazing. And then Alyssa, one of your Board of Governors representatives, also a former student. So, that's always really great to see. I like that. It makes me feel like I'm maybe having a part in all of this craziness that we're in. Anyway, I was complimented last time I spoke by someone in this room for always being so positive and enthusiastic. And I wish that I could say tonight was going to be the same way. I have just as much passion, probably some tears, but it's sad. It's just been a really tough week. The country has been left brokenhearted yet again, twice in the last week with the two latest school shootings. in the last week with the two latest school shootings, one of which had a much too close connection to one of our Danbury families. I've had to answer questions from my kids who watch the news very often with nobody watching with them, "What do we do, Ms. Scott, when it happens?" Yes, they say that, "When it happens," not "if," but "when," right, and that breaks my heart, right, it just saddens me more than I can say that I don't have an answer for them, like, do I tell them that we run, do I tell them that we hide, do I tell them that we sit and wait, I don't know, right, but kids are coming in and they're asking these questions, 42, I heard on the news yesterday, 42 this year alone, that's crazy to me, so I don't have the answers for those questions. And then, I didn't have the answers to the questions about testing either, so we're testing now, many of you are probably aware, SBU star, SBU is just weird, SBA sounds normal, SBU just sounds weird. But the kids are asking me questions like, "My video stopped playing, Scott, what am I supposed to do?" Really no, let's try pausing and switching computers, right? Or, "My screen just all went blank, what am I supposed to do?" I don't know, right? So we spend three weeks in a test prep unit, right, emphasizing all the skills and strategies that the kids are gonna need to do well on these tests, because they're important, we tell them if they're important, right, they just have to do their best, we try to make it as stress free as possible, but then when the test doesn't work, it worries them, and they get upset, and then it worries me too, because I know people are looking at my test scores, and they won't remember that we had to log in three times, or that we had no sound, or that we had to switch our computers three or four times, right? So that stresses me out, that's sad. Also, it makes me really sad, I've heard from two parents, one in Walmart parking lot last night, and one in the deli a couple weeks ago, and they've told me that their kids have wanted to come back to Staley to visit, right, college age kids, you know, talk to their former teachers, see who's there, and it saddens me that we have protocols in place now that don't allow for that to happen, and I get why we have them, but it makes me sad, right? And then the last part is the budget, right, so I couldn't bring myself to go less, I will be honest with you, because it's too depressing, right? I have to sit and listen to those city council members and the things that they say, and it just breaks my heart. So Dark Masara and the team worked so hard to put together a budget that's so responsible and yet still so slim, right, it's not even like an itty bitty bit of what we all really need, and you all know that, it's not news to you, right? And then, there it doesn't get passed again, here we are, right? So I know that things are gonna get worse next year, it's kind of because I can't not, right, and it's gonna be way worse than me spending the last two weekends trolling all three goodbills in the area plus savers to try to find comic books for our last writing unit to get comics into the hands of kids so that they can utilize the tools that they need to be a productive comic book writer, which is an amazing thing, but I didn't get any this year, so I went out and bought them, I won't tell you how much I spent, it kind of, it makes me depressed, right, so it's gonna get worse, and so it's kind of a bummer, right, that I've got to come up here and it's not a happy thought, but it's not all sunshine and roses, right, things in the classroom are really hard right now, really hard, so yeah, they're just gonna get harder, so thank you for all that you do, sorry, I'm an emotional hot mess. When I get upset, I cry, when I get happy, I cry, when I get angry, I cry, I pretty much cry at anything, when I read kids in school, they never read love, I cry all the time, I've got a kid who's like on tissue patrol, who just walks up with them, they just know now, just walks up with them, right, they get it, but it's real, so that's all, I'm not looking for solutions or anything, I just wanted to tell you it's hard.
Thank you, Ms. Scott.
Moving on to the consent calendar, I'll look at the Board of Education groups, the items on the consent calendar, exhibit 19-64 through 19-70 as recommended.
Second, by Mr. Retrina, any discussion? Okay, here we're done, all those in favor? Opposed? Looks like she carries unanimously. All right, Lady Representative, Ellsworth Avenue School.
So, Gigi, evening, everyone, I'm Marnie Durk, and I'm the principal of Ellsworth Avenue School, thank you for having us here tonight. While Jo sets up my laptop, I just want to introduce our staff that were able to join us this evening, we have Skip Jennings, our music teacher, who does a fabulous job, sadly he's retiring this year, so very exciting news for him, but we certainly will miss him. We have Georgia Lambracas, who is a third grade teacher on our staff, Mrs. Alexander Pacheco, who is our ESL bilingual teacher, joining us this evening, Mr. Christopher Camera, fifth grade teacher from our school, and Melissa Lahoud, who is a kindergarten teacher in our school. It is Teacher Appreciation Week, and so teachers have been very busy working this week, but we really want to honor those that are here, but all of our staff, because we do appreciate the hard work that they do, and it's been a really fun, great week at Ellsworth. Today, we had our Walk to School, National Walk to School Day, we had 173 students walking to school, 25 adults joining them, it was a great event, Mr. Walston was there, walking with us this morning, we had a really fun time. Students this week will be wearing their sunglasses, because their future's so bright, they have to wear shades, they had their hats off to teachers, and they got to wear their hats to school tomorrow, they will be dressing up as what they want to be when they grow up, which will be very exciting to see who and what they dress up as. And then on Tuesday, they all sent notes to their teachers with kind words, and some of them were really touching, amazing words that they used to explain and appreciate the teachers that they've worked with day in and day out, and when we say teachers, we really mean all staff in our building, because all the adults in our building are teachers, so it's been a great week. I just want to honor also the artwork that's around the room, as you can see, there's lots of beautiful art that's here tonight, that artwork is done by our students in their art classes, you see different artwork that is different grade levels, all sorts of different mediums, I'm not an artist, so I can't tell you what they are and what they're made out of, I know this is bottle caps, and all the students, each and every student from this school made a little bottle cap and has presented that and brought that here to the board event room, so every little student is represented with us today. So it's always an honor to come talk to the Board of Education, and we know you work very hard, but we wanted to have some fun tonight. So, with that being said, the staff and I have come up with a test for our lovely board of ed members, which we invite you to join. There is a prize associated with this, the winner, whose name will be on the certificate, this certificate also allows you to receive some Ellsworth Avenue School swag, Melissa Lahoud has some on. So if you are the lucky winner, you can redeem this for some Ellsworth Avenue School swag, next time you stop by our building, so good luck to all of you. This is how the game works, it's called Kahoot, anybody ever play?
I haven't.
Okay, so you have hopefully a smart device, such as a cellphone, if you go to in your Safari or your search, you're gonna type in the word Kahoot, da eh. And once you get there, you're gonna type in that number, and it's gonna ask you for a name, now you can put your real name, or you can put a pseudonym, it does require you to appropriate names, so you make sure your name is appropriate, it will not let you play if you type this in non-English, this is actually something students do in class, so we're having a little fun with all of you here tonight. It won't, it won't over my laptop. So the way Kahoot works, there's two strategies you need to use, you need to have the right answer, but you also need to be the fastest one with the right answer, so it's about speed and accuracy. Is everybody in here wants to play? Are we good, everybody? There are some clues hidden in the picture, so if you need some visual support, you may want to look at the pictures, so that's the first question, what is the ENS mascot? Okay, and then it shows you how many were right, somebody got it wrong. So our mascot is a soaring eagle, and you saw it on the side if you look carefully. A soaring eagle is also the symbol we use to refer when speaking about students who go above and beyond the behavioral and academic expectations. When a student soars, he or she is demonstrating behaviors that are responsible, safe, caring, and respectful. Each month, we have celebrations to celebrate the students we recognize as soaring eagles. Okay, you ready? Here is question number two. We practice our oral reading fluency with our... We try to go around and gather lots of pictures from our school. We call them our book buddies. At Ellsworth Avenue School, students work hard to be role models for each other, this includes academic role models, often you will see the older students helping younger students navigate both academic and social situations. How you doing so far, everybody doing okay?
It's like a yes. My computer's not working.
Now I'm gonna get a little trickier. What year were we built, Ellsworth Avenue School was built? That's the plaque that hangs in our vest of yule that has the date, the building was built. In 2009, Ellsworth Avenue School opened, it replaced the Roberts Avenue School, which is where the current Western Connecticut State Police Station is located on West Con Campus. At Ellsworth Avenue School, we love to perform, stop by and see us for our holiday share or one of our many concerts.
I do always like to celebrate when everybody in my class gets it right, so nice job.
Ellsworth Avenue School students are engaged in academics and the arts, this year the school received the VH1 Save the Music Grant, which provides over 40 students with a musical instrument for free. Three years ago, we had 415 students, today we have blank students. That was the correct answer yesterday, today it's 502 students.
Approaching 1 million.
Uh, yeah, it feels like 1 million sometimes. Today, our enrollment is 502 students, we have four classes of each grade level from K to 5. Somebody's sweeping this game. We are lucky to have lots of technology, we have blank laptops, which is one for each student.
Oh, it's up to the new student. I want extra credit for that.
At Ellsworth Avenue School, we use our Title I monies to purchase items like laptops and smart boards, we receive Title I funding based on free and reduced lunch recipients. We currently have 90% of our students receiving free or reduced lunch. Additionally, we have the largest percentage of students who are learning English as a second language in the district. At Ellsworth Avenue School, we embrace and celebrate our ethnic and socioeconomic diversity. There's only a couple more, you spent, getting nervous? We have been recognized by the state of Connecticut as a school of distinction, blank number of times, there's a clue in that picture. Ellsworth Avenue School was recognized as a school of distinction for the 2017-18 school year for its high growth and state measures, it was recognized for the same reason during the 2015-2016 school year. The staff is hardworking, and there are a total of blank staff members. They too sometimes feel like one. That's from yesterday. Yes, we have, our dedicated staff come from a variety of backgrounds and educational institutions, many have been teaching for over 20 years and more, and just as many are new to the teaching field. Our greatest asset is the staff in the building, who make it a priority to impact students in a positive way each day. At Ellsworth Avenue School, we're very lucky to have many volunteers, they are usually from... Ellsworth Avenue School has many classroom volunteers who join us from the United Jewish Federation, the Association of Religious Communities, and also, we have students who work with ESABC mentors, because of our school's proximity to Western Connecticut State University, we have many colleges, I'm sorry, many college students working in field placements and observations, so the majority of our volunteers and help in the classrooms comes from WCSU and Association of Religious Communities, they are program, but we also have other agencies and groups that do personally. Okay, and the winner is? It was him! We needed to keep you on your toes, we hope you enjoyed playing, we really just wanted to give you a quick snapshot of our school, kind of the highlights, and also learning something along the way, this is what we try to do day in and day out when we work with students, we certainly want to encourage the joy in learning, and also, you know, making a lot of fun and just interactive and just enjoy what we do. I think, as I said, our greatest asset is our teachers, and I'm truly lucky every day to walk in and out of that door and see teachers that really enjoy their work, they enjoy being with students, and the number of students that are just amazingly kind and polite and hardworking and diligent, just as the teachers are, so it's an honor and a privilege to be the principal, and just thank you for letting us have a little fun.
Thank you.
Just, Marty?
Yes, sir.
Taking on a special role for us to remind her of. Her daughter, Pam, is going to University of Delaware.
Delaware State University.
Delaware State. I might want to say what you're doing for us.
I'm sorry?
You might want to tell people what you're doing.
So Dr. Sal was gracious enough to, once he found out where my daughter is going to school. Delaware State University is a historically black college and university. And my daughter attends the school. She is on the equestrian program there, but also really excited to be a student at that school. It's an agricultural-based school, and Pamela's desire is to be a vet someday. She is a student that attended Danbury Public Schools and then went to Danbury Public Schools, so very proud of that. But Dr. Sal has also given me the opportunity to go down there and do some recruiting for the district. So this past April, I was down there for a couple of days, met with students at the university, did some interviewing, did some information sessions, and hopefully are starting to build a relationship with the university to start to recruit students here to Danbury. And there was an interest. There was a great amount of interest when I did the presentation. Folks that... a lot of students that have gone down there for school, but maybe live around this area. And so there was definitely some interest and a couple of good candidates that were hoping to get back into the Danbury area and offer some positions to. So it's been a really great experience. I enjoyed it unanimously.
Thank you for doing that.
Thank you so much.
Have a great night.
Okay, we run to action item tonight.
That's the Board of Education Strategic Direction, Vision, Mission, Report of Graduation for 2019 through 2024, and for 2025, that's the T Word.
Seconded by Mr. Britton. Any discussion?
Just really quickly. I'm so proud and excited of this work. I really, and I expressed that to my higher education meeting, that I've just... I've been engaged with the process a little bit here and there and was just really excited to run with this. And I know the time and effort that went into it. It was a lot of work. And Mr. Wilson going out in the community with Judy and the whole team really is very impressive. Just a few things. The guiding principles, we have five guiding principles and six themes. I know how they all fit, but I just wanted to point that out just to consider that. It's not a big deal. It's just... I don't know. It's my... My... OCG. The other thing. In the coherence chart, I believe when you presented this to us, you said the Board of Education piece were the goals of the Board of Education. When you labeled this piece the Board of Education, what do you mean by that?
So speaking to the Board of Education goals and being in alignment with the strategic plan and the goals and actions that's outlined in the strategic plan.
For the district, so the district goals?
Yes, and so district goals will be... Not to be confused with the Board of Ed goals, right? And so your goals for the superintendent. But the thought would be that those goals, the goals that will eventually come from a more comprehensive plan, and then the goals of the Board of Ed is what would be wrapped around the students, the men, right? And so that will inform professional development. That will inform how we're going to monitor things, right? And so that was the thought process and including it in that circle. But then with the values of the district, that would be more comprehensive very good. And how we focus our... That's how we do it.
Any other discussion? None of all those in favor?
I agree.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
I'm in that Board of Education, except for first reading the following policies. P 0521, mission goals, objectives, non-discrimination. P 4118 dot 11 slash 4218 dot 11. Personnel, certified, non-certified, non-discrimination. P 4212 dot 42, personnel, non-certified, drug and alcohol testing for school bus drivers. P 4112 dot 52 slash 4212 dot 52. Personnel, certified, non-certified, security check, fingerprinting. P 3542 dot 22, business, non-instructional operations, food service, personnel, code of conduct.
Seconded by Mr. Fisa. Do you have any discussion? There are none. All those in favor?
I agree.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Superintendent's report.
Those of you that... Were at the Board at the town council meeting last night, the city council could help me out. Our board budget was reduced to the mayor's recommended budget appropriation. And last night at their meeting, they approved the mayor's budget, which Joe, I keep looking, is two point...
Two point... Two point two million was the allocation.
And five hundred thousand for the development. Which makes it two point seven. During that time, a few of the members on the city council requested an addition, amendment to the budget, trying to acquire a million dollars further appropriation to the Board of Ed's budget in order to accommodate a lot of staffing needs that people probably don't see. That was talked about for a while, but it was juxtaposed against the fund balances. And philosophically, some folks have problems with using their fund balance, which is a reserve, to keep to ensure that they meet unforetold needs of Danbury. So in the end, it was voted down. I did a few times. The mayor conversation with us has talked about working with us. That will make things work out, so we'll continue to work. The district, we now do our work. The municipality has done their work. They have their budget. We have a budget that's prescribed by them. We will be spending time in Hartford because the other part of your budget, which is really what we're really depending on, the Alliance Fund, the C S, will bring in quite a bit more money. At two point four million plus, the appropriation added three hundred thousand, three hundred thirty thousand to it. So that's another two point seven. If you add that all up, it comes out to... We figured it out. We keep going back to four. Five point...
Five point... Five point four if you take the corporations numbers and include the matrix line into that.
And the off in the room is the pension. Right now, the pension is not part of it. But the house money is going on. The municipality's being more in line possibly of bringing it back to the table for final approval. At least our lobbyists are talking that way. So that made that five hundred thousand for this year plus a million and something next year that'd be part of what's going to be charged back. So the work is going to have to begin now to look at what it is and how we reduce to that number. We're told that June 7th...
June 6th.
6th is the budget approval process in Hartford, if in fact they don't go into an extended session. So we'll be looking at the budget. I would encourage the board to think with me and help me because at some point, if we're reducing individuals moving too fastly, it may just cause apprehension. And we don't need to do that where money can be given to us, under known by us at this time. So after June 7th, we have better clarity of what money and resources we may have. We're also working with the mayor. We sent the memo yesterday. We're somewhat concerned about our excess costs in our special area. You may recall, the board, we had that incident at the high school on the second floor.
Oh, you didn't spark that for us?
That cost you a hundred thousand dollars because of the deductible that came out of our... We have no reserve fund to get that money from. It came from our bottom line. We have that and some over. So we've asked the town to think about helping us out if in fact we need it this year. Also, we are expenditure in unanticipated cost in special education and special needs for next year. We developed this budget in, started in November, January, December. People didn't even know this was existed. And we've handed the budget over, so we have these expenses. You have these expenses to deal with. So we have all this stuff going on that's going to have to play into the bottom line. We have some givens and things that we... I don't think you can just go and start reducing without looking at five or six areas. Pretty much areas that the board has asked us to look at before. Cutting away from classes as much as possible. Making sure that we have safety procedures and policies to support. Making sure we're following all rules and regulations that you have to. We have some other areas that criteria as we look at the amount of money as we reduce. So I think next week, we have a meeting with the Finance Committee.
Yeah, next Wednesday night, we have a committee of finance.
We'll be talking some more about that.
We'll talk at least the beginning of reductions. I know that's what you get down to since the city slash state moment.
There are some things that at your table that we put together in little envelopes, three asks that we're going to ask the legislators to do for us. It's dumb news to you, you know, ask them to support the government's budget or the appropriation budget from Hartford. Seeing if they can allow Danbury to be a distressed school district, not so much municipality. And the strategy there is to try to change it so that if you're an Alliance District, you're meant to qualify, even if the town does not. We talked with Ryan today about that. And also to reduce the graduation requirement. Somehow, people are finally beginning to think. Last night, I received a survey from CAPS that as they're putting together their new requirements and also in the current legislation, they're asking us to create some more curriculum work. They're looking at required technology education at the elementary and middle and high school. That people may have to start moving F T's around more to meet this. They're saying, what are we doing this for? In fact, we really need this in time till we can afford to do it. How necessary it is. And does it really make a difference on the Titanic to move the chairs around? Should we be looking at other things? Attention rate at post-secondary? So there is a K fourteen or K sixteen committee that's meeting. If they really want to do some things, do some things with that group to change the behavior at the middle and high school so that kids can be more successful as they leave high school and not just play around with credits. Because they're really going to be... They're all different. There's no definitive way our districts are going to implement it. We don't. So we're asking for those things to not happen. If they don't, it saves you some money. It saves you some big time. So what we're doing, if you look at our posting, we know, for example, the elementary, we have a few positions we have to fill where they're going from three sections to four. So we have those jobs posted. With the... we're anticipating some growth at the high school. So we have those positions posted. Also, positions posted in special education and bilingual education, just to get a head start as we move through the spring. Last night, you know, again, they approved the budget, which is what we asked for, seven point seven. And we got two point two. I did A and B at the same time. Enrollment updates, Dr. Sims talked to me last night, and I was told that I was asked about our increased enrollment since October. Not the October one that you received, but since October to now, I heard Marty, his presentation, was already out of date, but she received two more students. We have two hundred and seven students that's come to the district that's redeployed among and between the classrooms that we've had. And those that are receiving services, many of them are receiving services, providing services that we had and not anticipated. So, you know, and half of those kids came in after we reduced the budget to speak to you. Those now are our responsibility to educate and provide services. That's part of what we do. So tomorrow, we're Danbury in Hartford. You know, it is a show and tell day, but we're going to do some shaking and asking. And so if you're going to be there tomorrow, please do. If you have this card in front of you and you may want to send it to your legislative, we gave it to the B T O parents last night. We sent these cards to the schools and asked them to distribute some of them to parents to advocate for Danbury. Michael Ferguson said last year, it's out, you know, everybody's got a story. Danbury's got a story, but everybody has a story. We got to tell their story. You got to get people's faces, and you got to tell them what you mean. Last night, I think it was Friday, figuring out, I walked around the schools, and let me tell you what I saw. You know, kids in the hallway, train standing, people short of supplies. This is what's going on in your schools. And yet, you get seven schools of distinction. And the mayor touted it last night. But I reminded everybody, seven schools of distinction, still moving towards proficiency. So, you know, we got to get some more resources for our teachers. So things can happen. And it's not what we're doing, it's what we're not doing. You don't see that. And that's important for us to get some more resources to do that. Men, let me go to have first, I want to talk about...
Back to the enrollment.
Yeah, go ahead.
I just, I want to just highlight for the board. In the pack, I highlighted all the schools that's sensitive seeing the growth. Mill Ridge Park, Park 667. We opened that split. It was like 580 when we redistricted, somewhere in that number. Elsworth was built for, I think, 370 when it was constructed. So that's a long... Mill Ridge's growth, obviously, if you look, you see a new bubble there with K and one. You have nine hundred and forty-four kindergartners. We had eight ninety-nine, I believe, on October 1. Eight ninety-nine, October 1, and now you have nine forty-four for kindergarten since October. And the other thing I want to hit the bottom. Couple things to add, but Rogers Park, over a thousand. That's important, I think, and a concern. And also, your 12th grade is your smallest grade you have right now. It's a relief. You're going to be, you're going to see your enrollment as a district well quickly because once you lose that number of seven hundred, you're truly have the eights and the nines that are going to start to fall through. And those are, you know, some key parameters in this. You have some sites for next week. I know the mayor's been talking. There's been the conversation about possibly a referendum coming for construction. We're starting to frame what that looks like. But there's definitely... It's got to go quick.
Yeah, so a perfect storm, no resources. You've got increase in enrollment because of the birth rate. And then you have mobility increase too. You got those three things happening. So the predicted numbers that we thought we were going to get, you're getting. And you're getting in addition to that, those that are moving into town.
The link spike's concerning. We got, usually October 1 is kind of a good number. We see like that percent, one percent growth. We really, October 1 was flat, but then we saw this massive spike after. It was over.
Yeah, well, there's a lot more, there's a lot more people moving into the country over, you know... And I, this is a popular site for people to come to. And my fear is that if that number hits a million across the border, the share that is the expectation at this point, we might end up with three hundred more, four hundred more students. And we don't have the capacity to do it.
And Kelly knows too, your crystal numbers have moved up considerably. We were one hundred and now we're from one hundred fifty or now... Three, three sixty-seven right now.
It's phenomenal. If this keeps going, we build a school, we'll be outsized in two years.
Well, you know, that word is very important. If there was a possibility for Elsworth, definitely a larger school that was initially recommended.
Yeah, second floor.
Second floor, and they didn't do it, you know? And I think we've got to talk with the city fathers to be a little more strategic in their planning and not just think about the, you know, the basic foundation for reimbursements, which has been the driver that puts us in this position now. You know, and had to build that second floor, you know, it all got reduced on us. We had no ability to do anything. And now we've got, as Joe mentioned, as many students there. So we have some opportunities to provide some better spaces starting next week. I heard the mayor say last night, I think he said, something about, you know, making some kind of recommendations for a referendum for the school. So that's going to be important to us. But we have some transition time that I think we're going to have to think about. And that'll handle it. Thank you, Joe. Also, Teacher of the Year, Ellen Myers was, you know, she was recognized in the fall. Today at the follow-up program in Humphreysville, I was there last Thursday night. And she did a nice job for us. She was representing the district there, so I just wanna give a shout out to her. We had something, I think, interesting happen, you know, at a tragedy we had a month, half a month ago. We have been working closely with our health providers and with the city and with our school. And we're gonna talk a little bit about it tomorrow. I think our delegations should hear about it. So Kelly, can we talk a little bit about what our efforts are in?
So we've been working with a couple representatives from the city of Danbury as well as the Danbury Hospital. And they are really interested, which is exciting to me, in partnering with the district and hearing our feedback on our collaboration when we have youth in crises or needing to access emergency services. I think I had shared at the last board meeting, some of the feedback we have provided is youth crisis unit. Currently, the adult and youth unit is combined. So whether you are, you know, a young, mature age student or a grown adult, you would receive crisis intervention and the same stuff. The other thing is that Danbury Hospital and their network right now does not have beds for inpatient hospitalizations for youth in crisis. And so we've shared that as feedback. They've also partnered with us on kind of redoing some of the policies. I know our staff can better collaborate when a child is in crises to make sure that we're getting the needed information in a very timely manner. They've agreed to contact us beyond school hours, but that's frequently a problem. If it happens on a night or a weekend or something like that, and we have the information that we need to know. And also providing us a little bit more detail when they're discharging a student on helpful information for us to know. We are also going to partner with them on May thirty, I believe, so... May thirty, we have a meeting scheduled with them at Danbury Hospital where we're gonna go over a community care model. And the goal of this team would be to have representatives from the community, from the Danbury Hospital, from local agencies that can partner on youth at risk. Of course, it would, we would be required to have parental consent in order to discuss the youth or a young adult if over the age of eighteen. And really start to talk about a care team model and how can we provide supports and services to prevent youth from needing crisis intervention. And so it would really be a monthly or bi-monthly meeting where we would talk and brainstorm as kind of a collaborative... The district would have several seats on that care model team. And they currently use this model to help with the homeless adult population in Danbury and have had a lot of success in reducing emergency room visits and the need for services by, depending on the fact of figure, well over fifty percent. So I'm excited. It has not been replicated with youth, but they're gonna train us in how they got this off the ground and see what we can do to try to help our students.
The doctor in charge is a national researcher and ex mental health expert. She's been working with the door walk in that area. She was in on a phone call with us, a conference call. And here's what's nice, there's no wall between us, you know, there was this protection. And the folks are really working together. And that's gonna serve as our justice. It will save lives.
And some kids, what we did, which was really helpful, is that they gave us some review of recent situations that they've encountered with some stumbling blocks. So we were very able to openly share that vice versa. And in fact, I was trying to say something and probably put it in a correct manner. And she was just like, just tell me how it is, I need to know. But they were really interested in partnering with us. And I, in my experience in the district, we haven't had this open kind of collaboration and communication. So I think it's a very, very positive step.
So we can talk a little bit about tomorrow, because there's some funding needs to promote this. The model that they're promoting is, I call them FTE, but they need an individual facilitator as well.
That's correct.
And the problem we always have is the board knows sustainability. Now we get a grant for one year and all of a sudden it goes away. So we're trying to get some resources from Hartford to help us out.
Back one of the things that they told us, they couldn't take the role and put it on an existing staff member. That really, in order to do this correctly, that they needed, you know, someone that could devote. That would be their sole purpose and important to me.
Thank you.
I just have a question about finance. So regarding the deductible for the DHS network, the deductible for the...
Oh, insurance claim.
Where is the line drawn between, you know, the city's responsibility for our buildings and the district's responsibility? Because, I mean, the city owns the buildings, they generally do the improvements, the roof, things like that. Why doesn't the deductible fall on them, sorry to carry that up?
Yeah, we hold the insurance policies for the buildings and liability policies for them. That's just been the way the relationship's been set up through time and more. We hold the actual policies, we pay, we pay and insure the buildings, even though they are city-owned and it's a board expense. We may be able to work out the city finance director, I did S L indicated, send that over to him. The city's policies are, with Karma, are higher than most. I mean, workers' comp deductible, for example, is five hundred thousand dollars per claim. So there's exposure on the board's side. We do have reserve funds for workers' comp particularly. We have a large reserve fund for liability claims, we'll see that in a minute. So yeah, we have discussions on that, because right now a hundred thousand sits with us.
In terms of like if there was a natural disaster or something, you know, structural damage was done to the building, does that fall on the district? Or does the city chip in? Like, how does that...
It would fall to our policy and our deductible. Well, but if you look in theory, as you were saying, it was an uncovered, I'll say the term like an act of terror, something like that, that wasn't covered by policy, it'll fall to the city at that point. Because obviously, the physical building is theirs. They have all the buildings. But the actual insurance policies are carried by the board. I, I would, it's a complicated setup, but that's basically the way they...
Yeah, I'm just like, I'm just kidding, I mean, obviously, it's not...
Yeah, I mean, I have... I don't view this as a temptation, but if you look at that relationship, you would have where you're responsible for, the insurance is carried by the property owner. So that's a different situation where ours, we actually carry the liability for the buildings.
I mean, is this like legis... Is, I don't know.
It's just, it's just been, it's just been set up and done that way for our, this is time and more. City ensures their buildings that are theirs and we insure ours.
Is this kind of how it's done across the state or...
No, no, I mean, I would, I would say no. It's not, not, they're not all set up that way. Typically, a lot of boards actually own their buildings, it's a different... We have, I think, a different setup. Most cities have a setup like this. I can't speak, the elders are designed by the parities. We own the buildings and I obviously have our own insurance policies covered.
So it's not legislated at the...
No, it's not legislated, no.
That's all, it's like...
Yeah, no, it's not... No, it's not mandated, it didn't have to be set up.
But we do, but there's a main problem for next year, right? The deductible.
Oh, the deductible's gonna go up. I believe the city upped the deductible to two hundred and fifty thousand per claim, from a hundred to two fifty again.
Right, so who, okay, so the city, as in the city of Danbury, up to the duck. So we hold a policy, who says the... It's our policy, can't we adjust the...
We partner with the city. The policy in a sense is completely hangs on the city of Danbury. The policy's written by the city of Danbury. The board is in, board is at back for those amounts. The proportion that is ours gets invoiced over us. The city finance director notified me of obviously two hundred and three hundred thousand dollar change. I mean, it does save us money on the policy side. We do have a large claim, which is gonna move up on insurance premium, which is no question about that. So going to two fifty does reduce that sum.
But if there's, if there's a, if you have to use the deductible, what's another thing you save?
Oh, no, premium. And we have not made a claim on this policy. I mean, I have not made a claim in seven years, because frankly, we thankfully haven't been anywhere near those amounts. I mean, I would never spend... It's irrelevant to submit a claim for ten thousand dollars, we know you're, you know where you're deductible. So we typically don't access that policy unless you have a, you know, call it a serious event like what happened.
So we, we pay the premium payments?
Correct.
But the city selects the policy?
The policies are covered by Karma or CCM. That's, that is ninety-nine percent of your school boards and cities are insured by them. So that is kind of a standard, what we look like municipal policies that we get. That's negotiated, there's a risk pool we all share. Our rates are quite low because we are getting in a municipal pool. Municipal claims are typically lower for liability comp, it's kind of a different story. But liability claims are typically smaller.
Do you know what the difference in what it would have, if we had a hundred thousand?
I can't think of it off the top of my head, no. I mean, it was, it was even, yeah, no, no, I...
So one of the things we're talking about is that can we buy some second insurance to cover us? Even because that two fifty, you could see something. Joe's gonna look into it, I don't know if we can or we can't, but that's just, that's concerning to me. A hundred thousand dollars, it's hurting us. Quarter of the menu is gonna...
Well, the...
And you can change yourself.
There's another side to it, which I don't know if you're allowed to do legally, but I've been doing it for years in my businesses and stuff, which is that I figured out the difference between having a higher deductible and having a lower deductible and what the cost of the policy was. And I put that money away to offset my higher deductibles, because I never put in any claims or rarely do. So over a period of time, I've accumulated, you know, eight thousand dollars into an account to just leave. Are we allowed to do that?
We're not allowed, the charity funds are over from year to year, so in a sense, we don't really have the ability to make a bank account. And that's why, we have to land, as I say, we have to stick at zero every time.
Right, that's, I mean, it's a way to self-insure your deductible, but I figured we probably have some...
I mean, do I think the city would step in if we had something, you know, worse? Yeah, I think the city would. But, you know, in this case, it's so far. We did, we did make the request over the city hall on that. Typically, if you have a claim like that, if there's nothing else going on this year, when we begin to world crush to do something like that, we'd probably get a lot of competing costs issue, they're making it kind of ugly out there budget-wise. So that's, that's kind of why it's a little more problematic. Now, in theory, everything that was lost under the claim, most of it, although pipe break was obviously from the physical building, everything's being replaced by the claim is really, is that what we call board, board items. The tile, the flooring coverings are ours to replace. The computers that were damaged were ours to replace. And a lot of those things are, they were damaged by, the pipe break included, the main part of the pipe break is issued heat. What's, what's damaged in theory is really under our burden to replace everything, so...
Anybody else? Okay. Information, celebration of Danbury Arts Dakota Festival is May eleventh, eleven to four at Danbury High School. And the Memorial Day Parade is on May twenty-seventh. Hopefully, it won't rain like almost every other day it is lately. And do we have anybody, have any communications, board reports?
No, no, please, have me here.
No.
No, no, please.
Okay. I attended the La Army project on, I think, Friday night at Danbury High School in the Black Box. And I just wanna say, you know, I had seen Godspell a few weeks back, but of course, the students did an excellent job. And it was pretty neat because there was stand room only at the Black Box. And this was a different sort of play, not a lot of props, but a lot of talking. And each student was about five different people and they're changing their shirts, just sitting there. But you could see their faces, their expressions, because they were so close, you know. So it was really, really well done, you know, great job and a pleasure to be at the Black Box and at the Hall. And it was just, it was really a wonderful experience.
It's a great, great place.
It's a great little therapy.
What?
Awesome, I love that.
Yeah, it was nice, it was cool. So that was great.
Great, thank you. Mr. Corratt?
Oh, yes, thank you. So first of all, just wanted to, you know, report back on our two policy meetings that we had these last two Wednesdays. They were excellent meetings. I wanna thank my committee members for all their hard work in reviewing these policies in advance, coming, you know, coming to the meetings with comments and feedback. And as a result of their hard work, we adopted the three, five policies that we presented tonight for first reading. And we've also adopted another, I guess, nine out of the twelve policies that we reviewed tonight at the committee meeting. That'll be on the next agenda for first reading as well. We have three more policies that we're gonna have to review before adopting and proposing for full board for first reading. I just wanted to, you know, see if we can get a date together in terms, you know, to meet again, hopefully for our next meeting. Do we have any recommendations? We have like a meeting next Wednesday.
We have two meetings next Wednesday. We have a six o'clock finance meeting and a seven o'clock facilities. How long do you think these three policies might be?
Oh, the way we've been moving, it shouldn't take more than a... Less than an hour.
An hour?
Yeah.
We could do like, could we do five?
Five, five fifty, four.
Five thirty works. That's words, words for me.
Yeah, yeah, five thirty. I mean, half an hour's enough, yeah, I think five we add to.
I think so.
Yeah.
We do a good job.
Are you sure about that, Kevin? Sure.
Yes.
No surprise policy.
Yeah, that's right.
So it's just the three policies. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you.
So, so five, five thirty, six, is that in charge?
That's great. I just wanna thank the other board members that aren't on the committee for attending as well. Appreciate it. And one last thing I wanted to say, it's in regards to, you know, a number of the city meetings, you know, that'll last like however many weeks. Regarding the budget, you know, everybody that's kind of like stepped up and, you know, made comments and, you know, supported and advocated on behalf of the budget that we adopted unanimously as a board, and I just wanna say thank you very much. I didn't get up and make any statements, just because, you know, I'm not the biggest fan of that. But I know that Gladys has made some statements, I know Kate Kanata made some statements. If I miss anyone else's statements, you know, that, because I can go to everything, but, you know, thank you for everyone that kind of stepped up and, you know, advocated and spoke about our budget. So that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Corratt.
Oh. Rachel?
Just a question on the enrollment numbers that you gave us. Do you happen to know the date from when you told these, the most...
I believe that's, that's March, March one. I'm sorry, May, May first, May first.
And the Westside Middle School numbers, we increased the slots for that school, twenty-five for each academy, right?
Yeah, it should be six fifty.
It should be six fifty, but it's only six thirty-one, so...
Yeah, I'm...
Any reason why...
At, at times when folks leave, they won't place kids late after a certain date. I don't know what the status is on this issue.
But so for next year, will it...
Next year, they should be at seven hundred, actually, because we've got the seventh grade program that...
If they didn't fill some positions, as we do over there, I ask, those slots become available if somebody wants to enter.
Yeah, I do know there is kind of a transition date that we stopped filling. I don't, I don't know what that is, I'm speaking. So that may be why they're still small.
And then which, eleven kids from the high school? Any idea?
I have eleven kids left.
Eleven kids, there are eleven kids less since October.
Well, that's, that's, that includes ACE as well. I mean, that, that's a large number, but yeah. I don't know what the, we did lose a few, but that's...
Did some kids graduate early?
No, no, some do. I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I, I had to work with eleven, but some, some, some just move out, right? The kids move in. Some go and go to bed. And a few might, may go into ACE second semester.
And then, any update for the Abbey Woods bus stop?
No. Bus companies looked at it, we've looked at it. I mean, the next stop is, is the board. I mean, there's a process that all the board of the state that's there. It's a, driving in there's gonna impact five bus runs at least, and it's gonna add more time to all the runs. There's sidewalks available there. It's all private roads, so it's, I mean, bus companies are concerned, we do drive in a few private roads in case we don't. I don't have any, we've kind of exhausted at least what we can do.
I appreciate that. I appreciate your driving.
Yeah, I've made four trips through there. I mean, a K turn up at the top really is just equally dangerous and messy to do for the bus moving through. You've got three stop signs going through development and, you know, you're kind of like, a bus, I think, a full stop with a stop sign. So that's gonna show more time. Yeah, it's not a...
And the walk isn't far, it's just...
It's not a far walk.
It's a steep hill.
It is a steep hill, but I mean, arguably, there's some of the nicest sidewalks in the city. So...
So the concern from parents is that the car is kind of bottlenecked there at the entrance. And then you have, you know, some grandparents that are walking their, their grandkids down the hill. And it's not nice weather like it is today.
It creates traffic issues down, down the bottleneck of the road, I mean...
It's not a far walk, it's only...
It's not, I know, I, if I drove a whole loop, I... It's not, I know, I, I, if I drove a whole loop, and I want to say it was point three of a mile, I want to go a whole, and going all the way to the, what I call the last point of the development. You know, it's, it's, it's within, it's within, it's within the guideline working students.
No, I just had to ask a question because.
No, it's a fair question. I mean, you know, it's, it's a, you know, and there's also a lot of dogs we don't go into today.
My, we're, we're, one of the things, the board's going to have to reconcile themselves with, there's two things I want to say this. You're getting larger class sizes, I mentioned. And when we only had buses, people are going to have to work, I'm sorry, not work, walk further. We talked about it last year. And if there's a hazard, we have to do something.
Yeah, probably.
And I always worry about that. Even this year, I mean, when you're looking at, as I said to you before, kind of, what kind of lens could be reduced? Remember, we had that study done, you know, with that transportation. Were we going through that? If the board were to implement that, it would save some money, but we don't think it's the right thing to do. So if we don't get any buses to what we have, and we don't make these major moves, and that's because you're putting some elementary on, middle school, you know, that thing, it could be, it could be difficult.
Reiterating.
And you're going, you're going, we're going to have appeals. And, you know, just when we, that's what I keep telling folks, nobody sees it until it impacts them. And that's what happened. And even though we may want to do it, so it becomes difficult. Joe and the group has, there's been a number of these.
Yeah, I mean, mostly we're.
We'll do a re-approach and see if it's safe. He drives it, parks it, plays department. And sometimes we can do it, sometimes we can't.
The problem with having Elsworth, for example, there's an extra bus covering Elsworth right now. The bus company has, helps me out with. It's not even a question of walking zone, just physical bodies on a bus. So we had, had to add. You'll add again next year, probably. I don't have that program in yet, but, you know, you add their hundred and some odd kids. And even, you know, walking zones and quarters are great, but you know, if I've got just sheer number of kids on buses, high school kids, you only get, you know, on a good day, fifty on a bus. I mean, they've seat seventy-two or hundreds of seventies of high school kids on a bus. So, yeah, runs are, and the last of the maximum schools are challenged because they just, they, they're, it's all a lot of cross town. So you've got long runs spanning the whole city, so those runs are now.
I know, I know firsthand.
There's no way to get to the west side, the east side quickly, there's just no way.
Amy in the.
Yeah, go ahead.
Well, I just want to report on our ad hoc subcommittee meeting that we had on May first. And thank you to all of the game, Rachel and Fred, Manuela, Kate and Glance were there. And we discussed, this is all about professional development for the board. And we discussed doing a July, September timeline for our self-assessment, our board self-assessment. This is what's recommended by Kate, so we thought we'll, we'll try it, we want to go with it. So we will have the board self-evaluation survey sent out to you sometime in the beginning of June, sometime in June. And then we were talking about a board retreat in September, September seventh. So just something to keep in mind, I don't know, there's a couple of people missing tonight, so we want to check with everybody to make sure that we're. Keep in mind that we'll have a few new board members next year. So really wanted to get some things established before, before November. So our next meeting, and you're all welcome to join us, is June fifth at five thirty.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I almost forgot. Thank you, everyone, for participating in our superintendent graduation committee meeting. I have scheduled another date for the committee, and that will be May the twenty-eighth at six o'clock here at E B.
Twenty eighth, six o'clock.
Six.
Or five thirty, where's it been for everyone? Oh, you six.
Is everybody good with six or five thirty?
Six.
Six, six is.
Yes, I just want to apologize. I recognize the couple of board members that spoke at, you know, all the city meetings and stuff, but I, I think that all the teachers and the students and the parents that came out and that spoke, you know, on behalf of the district and on behalf of the budget. I, I mean, I'm sorry, the outcome didn't really change, but I, I mean, you, they definitely, everyone definitely made a big difference. I mean, for example, the members of the, the city council trying to amend whatever the budget was. So I just want to say thank you to all the parents, the students, the staff and the schools. Thank you very much.
No.
What's that?
We don't have an executive session.
No. You're, you're good with that? Okay.
Can I make a motion to adjourn?
We have no executive session. We will go right to motion to adjourn.
I made a motion to adjourn, just maybe.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
One more.